We're just a couple minutes late, but I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the regular city council meeting for February 3rd, 2025, where the city administers. First, just have you have cell phones with you, please put them on airplane mode or on silent. And then second, would you please join me for pledge for later? The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, in which it is well, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so again, introduction, this is Lisa Wayland, I'm the mayor. And council members present, we have Peter Vickery and Claudia Lacy and Brian Govern. Captain Webkin is absent this evening. And then we have staff members present, Gary Peters, director of Public Works. And then Ellie Paul, who's our assistant city administrator, Jasper Kugel, to my right, and he is our city administrator. Brian Grim is our finance director, David Abel is our community director, community development director. And Paul Paul is our chief of police. So we can move on to approving of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions that we need to make to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
A move.
Okay, Mr. Govern, is there a second? Mr. Vickery, did you want a second? Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Vickery, seconded that. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with a aye. All opposed, motion passed, four oh. And next, we have, we don't have any special presentations. And in person, we don't have anybody sign up on their persons to refer. So we'll move on to consent agenda items. Are there any new issues we move for discussion? All right. So consent agenda items consist of A, approve our work session meeting minutes from January 22nd, 2025. B is approve our city council regular meeting minutes from January 22nd, 2025. C is a resolution to approve claims. D is a resolution for deferred special assessment request removal. As you recall, that was for the major property. E is the resolution, approve side yard setback variance at 5435 County Road 51. And F is a resolution to approve the CIP purchase of infrared asphalt heater for public courts. Any questions? Hearing none. There are motion to approve consent agenda items A through F. Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Govern, and Claudia Lacy made that. Motion, Mr. Brian Govern seconded that. All those in favor signify with a aye. All opposed, motion passed. You're good to go. Sure.
When you read it off, you said County Road 51, but County Road 151.
I'm sorry. Okay. One fifty-one in here. We have the right answer. All right. So next, we don't have any public hearings this evening, but we have business items. First is amending our chapter five regarding cannabis and hemp businesses. I will hand this over to David.
Oh, sure, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. We, as you well know, we've discussed this several times and got some direction from city council as to what direction to put a draft ordinance number 496 together. We did take that draft ordinance to the planning commission at their meeting last week. Generally speaking, the ordinance stayed as is as to what was presented to you at your last work session. The one change that the planning commission did make was regarding growing of cannabis. Their recommendation was to look at allowing this to be grown in the agricultural and agricultural preserve zoning districts. With the caveat that the parcel needs to be at least 50 acres in size. And we did, as an exercise, include a couple of maps as part of your packet that shows properties that are over 50 acres in size in that egg and egg preserve districts. You can see there's not a whole lot of them, but I wanted to run that exercise to give you an idea what that might potentially look like if you were to follow through with the planning commission recommendation. Otherwise, like I said, the ordinance is generally speaking very consistent with what you had seen before. We do have ordinance 496 in your packet for consideration this evening. And then if you do go ahead and approve that, we do have authorization of publication by title and summary for the newspaper as well.
Can you just call out if you think the, now that the agricultural areas, warrants, a few of the properties were approved by the planning commission to have compared to one that we looked at last meeting?
Okay.
I think it looked like anything that had touched a within the thousand feet of the park. Yeah, because I think a few of those were read in the last meeting. How are they not?
Sure.
Pull up that.
Yes, give me one second. Okay, Ellie, do you have that? Okay, Ellie will do that. Yep. Page forty-eight.
So those are the parcels that would be more than 50 acres.
And so those are light gray.
Yellow ones.
Or the.
Whatever, I'm not sure what color they are. No, I can see it. So Brian was there too, and I was the liaison. So a couple cases I should just point out. The planning commission wasn't real keen on allowing the growing in the commercial area because that's more all along Highway seven. So there were a couple of reasons why they weren't keen on that. One, they pointed out that when the cannabis growing, you really consume a ton of water. And we just talked about that. That is one industry that consumes a ton of water. And so they're like, they were concerned about that. But the other thing that they're also pointing out is the smell. The growing of the cannabis is very tingeant and not necessarily in a good way. And so they thought, you know, and then they also said, because of our climate, a couple of people had done some research, that it would have to be indoors. So we have this gigantic building, you know, with this that would potentially be unflankly right along Highway seven. So that's why they were saying not, not on in the commercial area alongside them. That's why they kind of pivoted and said maybe in the agricultural zone. And I said, well, if you do that, at least say only on 50 acres or larger because otherwise it could mean anybody in the agricultural district. Whatever the council wants to do, keep in mind, we only have to allow one business. And we might even want to, and then we could control it. But anyhow, we only have to allow one business. Keep that in mind.
Just to be sure, I, because I thought the light gray was scariest where they put, or you're saying it's kind of yellowish.
The reserve area, gold area is where they.
Yeah, and that's where you can do cultivation is in the gold area.
So that's the reserve, the agriculture reserve.
Yeah, and then the red areas are the commercial areas that could potentially have a dispensary.
We know what kind of traffic they would have, brokers coming into the house.
For the cultivation? It could vary significantly based on how they have it set up. If it's a greenhouse, if it's a open field. I mean, there could be people coming and going.
We want to be conscious of the people that were wearing condoms next to them. Especially if there's something, so clearly that's something you consider when someone comes to us. And so we also talked about they would need, David, correct me if I'm wrong, they would either need an IUP or a CUP.
IUP.
An IUP that would run with the owner, that's one thing. You could put certain conditions on it. But here's the other thing that we found out at the planning commission meeting. By state statute, they require you to have completely fenced and lighting. So I'm not sure what that exactly means, what kind of lighting, but that's the other thing to consider too.
That's if it's outdoors, Madam Mayor and Council. Like you said, I think the reality of this situation is that someone's going to do this on one of these agricultural properties. They're going to build a building. How else?
So if it's outdoors, then they need the lighting and the fencing. But if it's an indoor facility, then they don't.
But the lighting obviously goes away. They might still have to fence it. I don't know if Sarah can chime in on that, but the lighting factor is non-factor.
See, I thought the lighting was for security.
Well, if it's in a building.
Okay. So it's not big prison lights around?
Well, if they're going to do it outside, it very well could be. If someone's going to put the investment to try to grow and get one round of crop in Minnesota, was, you know, the likelihood of that, I don't know.
The likelihood of this is for security, is it for growing? I mean, what if?
Yeah. All of it, all of that, yeah.
Oh, you think the lighting is also for growing?
Yeah, you have to. If you want it to grow, you know, there's an element to that.
And we can't say, okay, so then can we say there's no outdoor growing? Because I don't think we want huge lights.
I don't, I don't think you can.
Okay.
Interesting question, do greenhouses count as indoor or outdoor?
Well, from, you know, the definition would be defined by the building permit in terms of what it would need to meet structurally there. Because whether or not it's a temporary structure, you can get by and have a temporary greenhouse that doesn't meet building code nor need a building permit. And so that, we'd have to look at the specifics of what kind of building they're building. We do, like Through Rivers Park District up here at Gil Woods, they have a greenhouse. They built a greenhouse that did end up requiring a building permit. It meets building code, but it's the greenhouse type effect of a building. So Sarah is, we're having some technical difficulties, so she's messaging me a little bit here. So she wanted to make sure it's clear that if we do allow cultivation, we still may have one retail license. So the cultivation license doesn't fill the retail license case. So you can have cultivators, but the license, the 12,500, you know, one license per 12,500 is for retail. Cultivators are different.
Do you have to have, okay, so what if, maybe Sarah would answer this. If we had retail, would we have to have, allow a cultivator?
Yes.
Okay, so then it's actually two.
It could be. The licenses for retail are the ones I think a lot of people focus on. The cultivators, not as much, but the cultivating is different. So you could have a retail license and then they could also approve, based on our zoning code, cultivator licenses.
So they're four oh, we could have more than one.
We could, yeah.
Well, we wouldn't have to have more than one cultivator.
I don't know, I don't know what the answer is there. I think if they meet, if they meet the zoning code and they get an IUP from the city, then they, we can have multiple cultivators. So as long as they meet all the zoning requirements and go. Well, you can go through the IUP process where you can give them feedback.
How about, so then, okay, because this, I see, I don't see retail being in Minnesota because of our location and we don't have like a downtown.
Doesn't really make sense.
It doesn't make a lot of sense. People aren't going to drive, who knows, two miles on Highway seven just to go to a store, but they could probably go to Mount or St. Juan. I mean, let's face it. Okay, but what I do see is this would, our community would be ripe for cultivation because, I mean, we have a lot of land, you know?
Yes.
So, and I don't, I, when I vision or look at Minnesota, having it dotted with giant sized greenhouses that smell aren't, isn't really what I think.
We have to have one. Well, we might have to have more.
So cultivation and retail are two separate things. They're kind of mutually exclusive, right? The license that I think everybody's talking about is the retail piece. The cultivation licenses and locations are based on our code. And so based on our code, right now, I think it's 50 acres in size in the egg preserve with an IUP. I don't know if there's any other additional.
And egg preserve.
Egg and egg preserve. So if they meet all those stipulations and everything we have in our ordinance, then they can do it. But they do have to go to, for every instance of a cultivator, they have to come to city council and go through the IUP.
Some stuff like property that is in between our gold spaces, are those other farms?
They are, but they're less than 50 acres.
Right, but they could say, I don't want a giant weed farm next to my house.
And that, they would have the process, they'd be able to come in and tell council.
Smell that every day.
Yeah.
I would think there's only a few, like the corner ones and the one, you know, and.
David, you just said that it was the agricultural areas too, so would there be light gray ones?
But it's over, anything over 50 acres?
Yes, light gray ones with that.
So that's something that city council can consider during the IUP process. And that might be, hey, we need you to build a building and enclose this because it's close proximity to something that doesn't want that.
Is it still smelling?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, and then Sarah also wanted to indicate that if they enclose it in a building, that's one thing. If they, if they have it outside, like we were saying, it would be like the prison fencing and, you know, so.
With barbed wire.
With barbed wire and lights, that's what she wanted to make sure is known too. So hopefully you're looking at it like cultivation and retail are two different things. We have two different sections of code for that.
I thought makes sense, we can't say it has, I think it has to be in a building. Didn't say we require it to be in the building. Can we say that in our ordinance, it has to be in the building?
No, you'd want to review that as with each instance and each IUP.
Okay, so then another question, I'm thinking, I talked to Jasper about this. Could we then just say it has to be in industrial zone area? Which is very limited in our community. But if they wanted to come in anywhere else, then they'd have to have it rezoned.
I believe so, I believe that's the original. That's where we started. Yeah, that's the original. Recommendation, planning, planning commission added the egg, egg preserve, 50 acres and larger. It was in general too, I mean, they were talking about, if you recall, about, you know, allowing more opportunities for people that own a farm and with struggles of farming, that if, you know, what's soybeans versus corn versus hay versus, you know, if there's an opportunity for landlords to make money, why wouldn't we give them that opportunity?
Right, and that's, that was their discussion too.
So you do have the ability to only allow it on industrial if you choose. We'd have to, you know, take that into consideration, change the ordinance. Which we can do tonight, I think on the fly, right? We'd need that reflected in specifically in your motion, and we have to make that change, yes, yep.
And then, so then another question, let's just say there's a farmer that would like to come in and grow. Could they come in and ask for a variance if we say industrial? Or they could come in and ask for a rezon? Right, they could ask for their property to be rezoned industrial.
But that likely wouldn't make sense. You'd be dealing with spot zoning likely in that scenario. If it was right next to the existing zoning district, the industrial district, that would make some sense. But, you know, if someone far away from there wants to do that, that wouldn't make sense. It wouldn't be a variance because you're deviating from a standard. So you could not do that. It would be a. You'd want to change the code.
Change. It's a little farmer wants, but it's not bothering neighbors.
Well, let's see, the 2040 plan, the idea was to keep that air preserve as long as possible, to keep it rural. So I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, David, I don't think we're planning any development in that area. Housing and things like that, but want to keep it as long as possible, keep the concentration for southeast. So that probably is the least harmful area to have.
And I don't like, this cannabis cultivation at scale is likely going to be a larger facility. So maybe you say 50 acres, I mean, they, somebody might come in and want to combine lots too, to go, you know. So they're not, you know, you might be thinking of like a mom and pop cultivator. Likely that won't happen for cultivation. Like there's going to be cultivation centers throughout Minnesota that are pretty large scale that supply, you know, the dispensaries. So, you know, if you're talking about really small scale, there's stuff in state statute that allows that already, you know, plants per person and things like that. But, you know, the cultivation, I think you're more than likely going to see something at scale to provide something larger, you know, than a 10 acre, you know, a small parcel that's just growing or cultivating, kind of as a hobby. I think you're going to see that at scale, if that helps. So, you know, I would say if the group doesn't want to see, you know, the potential in the egg, that's something that you can change tonight. And if you want it just in industrial, you can make that motion to have it be in industrial. I think one of the most important things is that we get something on the books. And we can always come back and revise and change as people come in with requests too. Like if there's something that doesn't make sense. But because we're getting to the point where they might start issuing licenses sometime this year, it's important we have some zoning code on the books.
I've really got ideas for you about doing this, so I guess I flip my matter.
Can we do that, David? I'm like, you don't know. I just, I worry about the smell and about the, the look and stuff, that's what I mean. I mean, I understand wanting to.
I think they won't come.
200 acres or 200 acres or nothing.
Yeah.
Can we make it for the egg, for the egg stuff? Can we make this that it had to be a landowner and they could say sublease it for somebody?
Well, they could buy it though.
True.
So, I mean, in corporation.
Well, my thought was that if there was going to be, say, over the planning commission meeting, they were kind of talking about, you know, people, the right to use their land. It's one thing if you're growing it, have some skin in the game. It's another thing if I'm leasing.
Oh, leasing.
Other party, on town, we said, marijuana, the tryst of.
I think that might be very complicated to enforce because we don't necessarily, we're not privy to all the private leases, you know? Something that we could look into. I think for future code, I don't know if we want to incorporate it, but we could, we could look into it. But I think it would be very challenging to even know.
The only other way to restrict this more, other than what you were saying, Peter, is to increase the size of the lot, so that it has to be 100 acres or more, something like that. Then that would probably eliminate about, there would only be a couple, I think, right? I mean, could it be one, two, three, four, maybe four, if I'm looking, if I'm guessing right?
I would say if we're limiting it that much, it might be a, you know, if somebody wants to come in, they can do a co-text amendment to change it. You know, if we're limiting it to only four parcels.
Okay, so do the industrials only?
I think that's, that's safe. And then if there's a request, we can, we can take that request. And there's a process, there's a process defined for them to have us evaluate the request.
So anything else on the, on the other part? Anyway, you can really concentrate on the growing part of it. David, excuse me, David, have you seen what cities where this is happening the most? We have any record of where we're seeing a lot of cannabis growing crops? I mean, is it, it's just everywhere that has got egg?
In Minnesota? No, I have not heard, I mean, they haven't issued any licenses yet. I mean, that's the biggest problem. I know the Bachmans is one of the biggest ones right now that has a, you know, a license and they're in the north metro area. They've shifted some of their production to do this because they already have the facilities, you know, to do that sort of thing. But no, it really, they can't yet. You know, they haven't issued licenses, so people can't, you know, start doing that yet.
The Bachmans is starting to go in that.
Yep. Yeah, so the cultivation licenses open up February 18th and close March 14th. So coming up here, which is kind of why we're, we want to get some big pass. Sarah did text, she said Oakdale just received an inquiry about registration for a big cultivation. So there's.
Oakdale, they're small, they're not.
Yeah, that's what she said. So, so there's people out there kind of, and we've gotten, I mean, I think David and I have both gotten phone calls from just speculators, you know, wondering about our code and if we're interested in, you know, this was probably last year. So there's people tooling around.
All right. So, let you all, we would like to, I think we should pass something. And it could be this, and then with the minor change that it would be allowed in the cultivation part, would only be allowed in the industrial area. And if we give staff that direction and pass this tonight like that, then they can make that change and we can still get this on the books at least. I think that's what staff is concerned about, we want to get it out the books before the 18th. Because it also has to be published and it's really not code until it's published. So we need some time for that as well. Now let's go back and change it.
The only thing that happens, potential dispensaries, it's kind of led into like four or five units around seven. Because there's that one, I think it's the used paralon, looks like if that's like highlighted seven is on there. Order, it would make sense to have like a minimum size of that, just exclude that because I feel like if we did have to put something in there, that's a lot of problems being so small.
Well, it's so small, it doesn't have parking, I mean, I don't know if you could build anything on there.
Could be difficult, yeah. You'd be, you know, you'd likely, I think just the process itself of setbacks and hard cover would, you know, you'd need probably so many variances that it would eliminate itself. Whereas you have control in that situation from a council standpoint to say, no, that we're not going to issue, you know, that many variances to build a building there that it's not reasonable to allow or something like that.
That's why it's been a car lot. I'm just trying to say fair personnel.
Yeah, I mean, that's like, I was worried about this parking trailer, the trailer.
Yeah. Also, is it impressive, egress, all highway seven, whatever, two, so there's. But, yeah, okay. All right, good question, is anything else? All right, then is there a, I'm sorry, we need a motion, right? And that's listed on one page. An ordinance amending city code related to cannabis and hemp businesses in the city of Minnesota. It's ordinance number 496, amending it to include our discussion regarding changing cultivation from egg and egg preserve to industrial only. Anything else? Okay. Sure, go ahead.
So, fifth question to.
And is there a second?
So, second.
Okay, all right, any further questions or discussion? Good question. All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify with a aye. All those opposed, motion passes, and then I need a motion to, how to say? Publish it, thank you, by title and summary.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Govern, and thank you, Mr. Vickery. You raised your hand, sorry. All right, all those in favor signify a aye. All those opposed, motion passes. And then adopting regulations related to cannabis, adding sections 1415. And also then, can we just do this all at once? Or do we need separate, I mean, can we just say, adapting the regulations related to cannabis, adding sections 1415, and then adapting or approving publication by ordinance, by title and summary? Can we do that?
The title and summary is important that we have a majority voted the council, so I would do that one separately.
Super majority.
Super majority.
Okay, anything else we need to talk about on regulations related to section 1415? Is there anything we need to point out, questions? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to add for adopting regulations related to cannabis, adding sections 1415? Thank you, Mr. Vickery, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Govern, all those in favor signify with a aye. All those opposed, motion passes. And then the resolution to publish by title and summary, is there any questions on that? Don't think so. Is there a motion to do that?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Govern, is there a second? Mr. Vickery, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with a aye. Motion passes four oh. It should be, we should be fine with four oh, even though we have one absence, so. And then amending section 305.01 Parks Commission and Planning Commission membership. So as you recall, when we interviewed, and some of you haven't been here that long, so, um, we've had kind of, um, let's see, we've been challenged to get enough people to apply for our planning in parks. And so what we have, of course, we have seven member, uh, planning commission plus we have two alternate. And we have, we started the alternate position two full. One, they're kind of, um, commissioners in training, if you will, but they, they play a very important part. Because if we don't get a, a full mission, those alternates can step in and actually participate as a full commissioner. And so then also on the parks, we have five park commissioners and again two alternates. And the last year or two, I think we've had at least one open park commission seat. And we've had an open, um, alternate, and we have two open alternate seats on our parks as well. So we've had a lot of open positions. And so what we're thinking is, um, this last go around, the, the people that applied said, some of them said they'd be willing to serve on both. And so we need to change our ordinance in order to, um, allow them to do that. And I think for at least, we don't have to in the future if we get more people applying, then we don't do it. But it gives us the option of doing it. And so I think it's a good thing if we, if we want to do that. Uh, Mayor, I, I asked Jasper, this, that, that, just for argument's sake, um, let's say the only people that applied seem very, very unqualified. That was not the case here, but let's say that happens. Now, granted, in a perfect world, we have read their applications and discussed it before they came before the council. But, uh, it seems like we shouldn't have to, there's two open spots and two people standing there that we should have to put them on the, in those positions. What would be the protocol for saying, we're gonna step back and take another month to try to get more people to come forward? I mean, is that even doable?
Yeah, that's at the discretion of the city council. Absolutely. They're, they're appointed by you. It's a volunteer position and it's your decision to make.
And actually, one time, if you recall, we had some people apply. They didn't even live in the city. And we said, sorry, we don't qualify. Because that is one of, I don't think you have to have it, but, um, it has been our standard practice that you need to be a resident of the city. One was like, I don't know, forty-five minutes away or something. And we just said, yeah, sorry, but you're, you don't qualify. But, and I think there's been times where we've also said, let's extend the, um, the application timeframe because either we didn't get any or maybe there was one or something like that. So we can always do that. Okay, thank you. All right. So are you in favor of allowing, um, park commission and planning commission people to serve on both? Should we? Yes. All right. So then, um, this is an, again, an ordinance change. So is there a motion to change, um, ordinance number four ninety-seven, four ninety-seven amending section three oh five point oh one? Yes. So, thank you, Miss Lacy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gover. Any further question? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes, and then also then ordinance number sixteen dash two four, publishing by title and summary.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Gover. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Victory. Any question? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. And then, um, approve our public safety department for motion, direct advance from seven twenty twenty-five, and I'll give them to.
I'll take this one. Madam Mayor, members of city council, uh, this is kind of the next step in our succession planning of, uh, Mr. Fall's retirement. I think he's got a little bit over like fifty-two days, maybe something like that.
And how many hours and how many minutes?
Um, so on, on the twenty-ninth, we met, uh, myself and Paul met with the personnel committee, um, which consists of Mr. or council member Victory and council member Breckin. Uh, and, and went through, um, comp data, regional market data about the deputy chief and the, and the, um, director of public safety positions. I'll start with the director of public safety position. So what we're recommending is, the personnel committee is recommending to promote, uh, uh, deputy chief, uh, Craig Squires from deputy chief to public safety director effective March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. So one day after Mr. Fall's retirement. Um, so seamless transition. So, um, what we're looking at, um, deputy chief Squires has been here since two thousand and one. So he's been here almost twenty-four years. So he's, he's, uh, put in a lot of time for the community. Uh, this is something that's been in, in process for some time. Uh, I've kind of known that, uh, Mr. Squires is, is gonna fill the shoes once Paul decided to, to leave. So, um, we're looking at, you know, I, I'm, I'm excited for it and Craig will be a, a great public service, there's public safety director, um, police chief. Looking at the fiscal impact of this, it's something that we've, we've, we've planned into the budget. The deputy or the, the deputy chief is a grade ten. So if you're familiar with our, um, grade step plan, that's, it goes to twelve. The deputy chief is a ten. What we're recommending is, is moving, um, Craig from a step seven, ten seven, uh, grade ten, step seven at sixty-four thirty an hour to a, uh, grade eleven, which is the, the police chief grade, uh, step or sub-grade, sorry, grade eleven, step seven, which is seventy dollars and seventy-three cents an hour, which is a ten percent increase from what he's currently making. So.
But it's a salary.
It's a salary position. So is the deputy chief position is also an exempt, uh, salary position. So that's a ten percent increase. Um, the sergeant promotion from, to deputy chief. So we're talking about, uh, Sergeant, uh, Patrick Cummings. Uh, he has been here since two thousand and six, so nineteen, gonna be nineteen years this year. So a couple of employees that have been with the city for a long time. So we're very, very lucky that we have this opportunity to promote from within with people that are so experienced. So, um, currently, um, Sergeant Cummings is a union employee, uh, on the union schedule. So it's a little bit different than to, to match it up directly with our, uh, with our pay plan. Um, but moving him from the sergeant, uh, to the deputy chief position, uh, we're looking at moving him. He has currently a base rate of pay of fifty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. He is a, an, an ex, a non-exempt employee, so he currently receives overtime. So that's part of the, and it's not, it's kind of mandatory overtime. He does a lot of filling in of, uh, shifts that the officers can't fill in. So he's kind of in charge of, of that right now. So on average, it's a little bit under eleven thousand dollars in overtime. So that was taken into consideration, not a, not a one-to-one. Uh, but his, his total compensation for twenty twenty-five is estimated to be around sixty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents an hour. Uh, the deputy chief position again is, is evaluated at a grade ten. Looking at that, we're, we're looking at moving, um, uh, I guess Sergeant Cummings to Deputy Chief Cummings. Uh, moving him to a grade eight step or grade ten step eight at sixty-six fifty-five an hour, a lot of numbers here, which is a, a five percent increase from his current pay, including overtime. So you can see that there's a little balance there between overtime and, and not. So that's, that's what we came up with at the personnel committee. Both of these are, uh, recommended for approval from that group. Um, one of them's here, so you can, you can fill in if there's any, any questions about that. So the next steps, um, since we got, um, uh, recommendation from the personnel committee, offer letters have been extended to both employees. Both employees have agreed to those offer letters and have signed those. So, um, looking at that, there's some background that we're gonna have to do in a, in a, I think it's psych evaluation, which we do. Developmental assessment. So we do that for all, all promotions within the, the police department. So those positions will get filled, uh, if approved on March twenty-seventh. We'll have some internal positions or sergeant position to fill and then likely a police officer candidate position to fill. So we'll backfill those once, um, if we get approved tonight, we might start that process sooner than later. So it's kind of a seamless transition. So we've, we have fifteen officers right now. We finally hit that number. But in, you know, a month and a half, less than two months, we're likely gonna be down, we're likely gonna be down to fourteen officers again. So, uh, we do have some, some officers kind of in the hopper that we can hopefully tap into. So we're not down an officer for very long. So with that, what we're looking for is, uh, a motion to approve the conditional offers of the promotion of Craig Squires to the Director of Public Safety and Patrick Cummings to the Deputy Police Chief effective March twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Victory, seconded. And Mr. Victory seconded. Any questions? Mr. Gover, question? Okay, great. I'm looking forward to, um, and, and as Jasper said, um, I think we're very fortunate to have these two seasoned and, and quality candidate employees that we can promote. It's always good to be able to promote them. And I do know that there's other, um, organizations looking for these positions. So we're, we're really, um, fortunate that, that they want to stay here, but it's because they have such a great council, right? All right. Um, so with that, um, all those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. And we'll look forward to their promotion. Now, do we do any, now will we, will they come to the city council and we get to do some kind of big deal?
Yeah, we will. We'll bring them in and unlikely see Craig here, you know, as between now and when Paul retires. Might take a couple nights off, a couple Mondays off. Uh, but we will. Once, once they come in, we'll, we'll kind of have a public, uh, welcoming event for the new employees. Because that Director of Public Safety position is a, is a big position.
And then we have another two employee that just started recently. And is he gonna be coming at our next work session?
We have Sweare in, and we have Brendan.
Right. What are you gonna do, train the major meeting then?
Sweare in is at the next, the, I'm not sure how to spell it. I will try it.
Okay, okay. Um, then, you know, we were talking about psych evaluations. Chief, are you gonna have to do a psych evaluation once you're retired?
Probably will, to, I guess, I come into that new life.
Yeah, right. Well, you won't be missed, so I'm just, you know. All right. Uh, with that, then we'll move on to staff reform.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have a couple things. So I thought I'd give a little legal update. We have a couple of legal things happening. So just so you know, so you know that we're still working on it. Uh, we have the, the, um, dog barking citations that, uh, have went to, um, district court. Uh, there was a ruling in our favor. I think most people know this. Uh, well, this is now going to the Minnesota Court of Appeals. We've requested a one-day trial date for July, which seems like a long ways away, but that's, that's the scheduling. Um, there's been a counter offer to do it in October of this year. Um, I'm sorry, the do, the dog barking is gonna happen in July. I'm mixing up the other one. So, um, the dog barking will be in, in, in July. It's Minnesota Court of Appeals. Um, if everybody under, understands the process, they'll go to that. If, uh, if they lose the, the, the Minnesota Court of Appeals, they could have, uh, uh, appealed to the Minnesota Supreme Court, which then they could then either take the case or not, or the Supreme Court could then send it back down to the Minnesota Court of Appeals. So, you know, we're, we're hopeful that maybe by the end of the year, this'll, uh, just go to bed. Um, it does cost us money, just so everybody knows. Like it's, there's, there's legal fees associated with, with these things. Yep. Yeah. So it's kind of in Peter's neighborhood, so he kind of knows. Um, but, so that's the dog barking update. Um, so we should know more here by the summer, hopefully. Um, the other, uh, more, more recent, I think, at city council touch point was with, uh, um, uh, I U P request that was withdrawn regarding the boat storage place. We've picked back up that lawsuit. So the city is, is suing them to, you know, get their boats and other things off the property that aren't allowed per city code. That's now in kind of limbo because they're in between attorneys. Uh, so we're, we're using their current attorney. Um, but he wasn't here, I don't believe, that I, that, uh, yeah. So that's still in limbo. That is gonna, we've requested a trial date for that. That is still under negotiation. Likely this summer or fall. And it, it, it's a similar process. If it rules in our favor, then we'd bring it back to city council and we would have to decide how we would like to abate the, the boat storage. And abate means, you know, get, remove these, the, either give, have the property owner remove it, and if they don't, under a certain period of time, then we go in, get a search warrant, have somebody remove the boats, put them in, in impound and anything else that's not allowed. Um, and then those costs, those costs we can assess back to the property owner. The legal fees, the legal costs for this, um, are not generally recoupable. One thing to note is that, uh, Ken Potts, our, our past prosecutor, uh, up until the end of this year, he was handling the, this case under, uh, his retainer, which was quite reasonable. Um, you know, thanks, Ken Potts. Now we've got Campbell Knutson, who's, who's doing this work, and this is a separate piece that's not under their retainer. I think we were getting a really good deal with Ken, um, because he just said, well, we'll take this on. It's not necessarily prosecution work. This is more of a city code enforcement issue than prosecution. So that's kind of why the differentiation. So I think we got a bill for fifty-six hundred dollars, um, just to file the brief, uh, for the one-day trial request. So there was some getting up to speed in, in that nature, those types of things. So, um, we will track this. So we'll be able to tell you exactly how much something like this costs because, uh, in all likelihood, we will have another request, a code violation or something that we might have to pursue a lawsuit to abate. Uh, so these things do cost money. It's city council discretion if we pursue them or not. But as we get complaints, we'll bring them, we'll bring them forward.
Has the, uh, has the city been served with a lawsuit related to withdrawn application for the I U P?
No, we have not. So, um, they likely will not sue us. We are suing them though. Uh, so if we would have, if we would have denied the I U P, they could have sued us. And in that situation, the legal Minnesota city is likely would have taken on the case under our, so, but because we're the one suing them, it's all our cost. So it's the, you know, essentially the cost of doing business to enforce our city code. So as there's more developments, I'll provide updates. Um, but they will be slow.
So the, the neighbors that are distressed by this, they have to wait how long in here?
Maybe.
It is, it is ridiculous. You break the law and, yeah, you don't follow the rules, break the law and then your neighbors.
Yeah. Um, so those are the legal updates. So, um, in better news, I can transition. We have a strategic planning session scheduled for three thirty on Wednesday. I think the agenda went out with some memos. Um, so we'll see. Uh, if anybody has any specific snack requests, please let us know. We'll have some snacks to kind of get us through, maybe the witching hour of that five to six. Uh, there won't be any food, uh, provided, but, um, I think we can get done in a couple hours. So hopefully we can get done by five thirty, six. There's, you know, I think we have it scheduled till seven or seven thirty.
And I know Allison told them, you know, regarding.
So if you have any requests, beverage choices, snack. We might be here all night. Um, but yeah, so we have that, a lot of, uh, heavy hitting items. I think we worked through the, the water, you know, water treatment plant questions that we had that we can proceed a little bit more. It'll be another touch point. But, um, so we won't really get into that too much, but there are some things like the twenty twenty-six street projects that we have to talk about and, and give guidance to Allison and Gary about the scope of that project. Uh, I'd say that's probably the most, um, urgent or intensive.
Yeah.
Because if we, depending on, you know, what, we're gonna start that process, uh, the assessment for twenty-nine process this year. So we have to know the scope in order to start that.
I have a simple question. What about chickens? I've got a neighbor, a constituent, I'm not the, yes, but they're very much wanting chickens. So, uh, I'm sure you've all seen the letters, uh, Mr. Joe Rogers, I believe. He's done a lot of work. And how do we proceed with looking at that?
Yeah, so there's a couple of different ways. If there's a couple city council members that want to talk about it, we can talk about it at a work session. If this resident wants to, um, apply for a co-text amendment, which is what.
No, but he lived in town and he was talking about like two little hens that lay eggs. And I don't know what that sounds like or smells like or anything, but, you know, the constant eggs are not going up and they're hard to get and it's all about it.
Yeah, so.
But you're still a good point. There's a lot of, you know, people that live in the city that have a couple little chickens. And I guess, I don't know how it comes to that. I don't know much about it, but.
Yeah, and one thing to consider, you know, there's other.
Say that again.
A, a co, co-text amendment, if they're in an area that allows it or that doesn't allow it right now. A co-text amendment, if they're in an area that allows it, or that doesn't allow it right now. Another consideration is if they're in an HOA, there's HOA bylaws that might prohibit chickens as well. So we might be able to approve it, but their HOA doesn't, so there's things to consider, there's probably.
We can, we can put it on our work session list and then, please put the, he's written several times, I mean, makes a good point.
We can get it on a future work session, maybe this spring.
Then should we invite him to speak?
We can, if you want to forward me his letter, I don't know if I have it handy, and then I can forward it then. We will have at the next meeting too, all this note, we're going to talk about, at work session, we're going to talk about crosswalks at, will the COVID, we received a letter from one of the HOA boards regarding a request to put a crosswalk in, so we'll have some information, we've looked at this in the past. From an engineering standpoint, doesn't quite meet the threshold, but that doesn't mean City Council can't say that we want to put a crosswalk in a location, we'll just tell you what that'll do, and you know, the team is basically Allison, Gary and Paul that kind of weigh in on the engineering piece and the safety side of it, so. We'll talk about that. But that's all I have.
Then do we have a planning commission meeting in February, and do you need a, who would like to be on the ASI?
Denise.
February twenty-seventh, seventh, is it? Twenty?
Of course.
Twenty-four, okay. I will not be able to attend.
Yeah, I think I, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I'll leave in the next day.
Okay, so Peter will be your liaison, should we have a park commission meeting? Okay, okay. Anything else with staff? Okay, and council, any report? Okay, I have a few things, so just a reminder, our next meeting is Tuesday, February eighteenth. You might recall a couple years back when we had a holiday on a Monday, we've been moving up to Wednesdays. However, because of my schedule, we can't do it on the nineteenth, so we're moving into the eighteenth. So it's going to be the eighteenth of February, and then the March third meeting.
We're looking at the agenda, but right now it's looking like it's going to be, there's nothing on it right now.
All right, so there may be a cancellation of our third meeting, so just so you know. And then I attended Margaret Charlesman's open house, he was retired after forty-five years. And eighty-nine years old and was the mayor of Independence for all those years. And so I, I was there, it was a huge turnover, I mean, just huge. And of course, I mean, when you've been in office that many years. So anyhow, I attended that, and then Kathleen and Jasper and I will be attending the fire partnership meeting. And that kind of, I have a question, they've been talking, or earlier on, they were talking about, you know, maybe cities should hold a meeting, talking about this fire partnership. And I'd be happy to do that, so I'm wondering if we want to do a twofold, I don't know, we can think about it. Town hall meeting regarding our water infrastructure and what we've been talking about and struggling with. And I think that, you know, the more information we get out there to people, and the more they know that we've really thoroughly vetted this, thought about it, and, and discussed it, and then also talk about the fire partnership that we've been working on. It might be worth doing a town hall meeting sometime, maybe let's say in, in June. I didn't want to do it the same as the state of the city address, I think that's a little different. And I thought, maybe, it will pick a date, but, are you guys, do you think that's a good idea? Does staff think it's a good idea?
Yeah, I think more information.
Might get shot. Water thing, but, yeah, I just think it's good to have as much communication with the residents. All right, so staff and I will work together on a timeframe. Of course, you would be encouraged to be here as well, so that I'm not the only one. All right, with that, I don't have anything else. So is there a motion to adjourn? So move. Thank you, Ms. Lacy, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Brian, Mr. Brian. We have too many to cover. And Mr. Gover, and there's Brian Gover and Brian Primm, and it's like, oh, jeez. All right, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes four oh. Are we still finishing one else? Not there.